Order, please rise and join me in the pledge of.
Better? Yep, okay. Uh, good evening, my name is Heather Pellegrino. Oh, life at Roxborough. Better? Better? Gotta be right on top of it. Okay. You want me to start over? Okay. So, to begin with, we wanted to give you a sense of who our Roxborough Road family, Roxborough Middle School family is. Have a current total enrollment of seven hundred and seven students, including two hundred and twenty-six fifth graders, two hundred and thirty-three sixth graders, and two hundred and forty-eight seventh graders. Our enrollment from last year to this year lost overall of eleven students. But following the overall district trend, over the past six years, we are down over about a hundred students. Um, we are incredibly thankful to the Board of Ed for the fact that our class sizes continue to be relative. Our average class size for our fifth graders are twenty students, for sixth, it's twenty-three, and for seventh, it's twenty-two for their core area classes. It's actually a little bit lower than some of our, um, other classes like BACS and our. We're really grateful for that. Um, we currently, our percentage of students with disabilities has also re- um, overall increase of only one. Have two special class programs at Roxborough Middle School. The twelve-one-one program, which is our challenges, and our twelve-one-four program, which is our program for students with significant cognitive and adaptive challenges. Um, and altogether, we have a total of eighteen students in those two programs. Um, you can see our free and reduced lunch numbers have actually decreased. Um, but we do not think that that's a result of a population overall. As you guys are aware, probably, we have, um, free our students at Rocks. And so I think really probably what we're seeing here is that there's a lot of paperwork for free and reduced lunch. So I think that those, um, free and reduced lunch numbers may be a little not representative. So our mission and vision statements continue to focus on high expectations, collaboration, and collective responsibilities for both our students and our staff at Roxborough Middle School. Um, we are committed to the process of becoming a highly effective professional learning community. That end goal in mind, our staff is currently in the process of examining our if they're aligned with the three as of professional learning communities. Um, specifically a focus on learning, a collaborative culture with collective responsibility. Oriented, um, recognize that the results that we endeavor to acquire a clearly defined foundation on which to build. And so that is going to be the work of our BPT going forward. Our professional learning community. Uh, only one of our, not only our BPG chair, but she is also a member.
Guiding Coalition is a leader dedicated and committed. Lucky enough this summer. Learned a lot, but there was one thing in particular that really that was something that. So this was presented by Maria Nielsen and telling us about her school, who were in, was in about the same position that we are. Set aside time for collaboration. They had, by their essential standards, they had farms, they had and we were ready to do the work and they're ready to do the work. How exactly does that translate? Versatile process of research. How exactly does that work? And so she told us challenge that we've, we've have to about, there's five or six steps that she outlined. Identifying one or two critical standards or indicators. Sitting as a collaborative team to get all students mastery of those. We're hoping that by then, and then there's other steps like formative assessments and some of the census about how exactly the instruction will go. So for fifteen days, and it doesn't have to be fifteen days. But the group decides, the team decides, this is, and this is how we will operate. Challenge is, of course, to make that then after you. We're hoping that by using this particular format, we can enhance our skills and getting all students to. That is our SMART goal and the reason.
Thing, everybody, I'm excited to be able to start by talking to you a little bit about our graduation rate SMART goal. I am a member of our attendance committee at Roxborough Road Middle School. And we meet every Monday at seven forty, and you might think that that's kind of a rough time to meet, but the people on this committee just work so hard and they have such great ideas, even at seven forty on a Monday. Um, I'm super excited to share that we did meet our goal from last year, we actually surpassed it. So we lowered our chronic rate of absenteeism to twenty-five point seven percent. That was from thirty-three point eight percent. And our new goal is to continue to lower that to now twenty-three percent, and this is how we plan to do that. So over the summer, our attendance committee met and we created a list of students who were chronically absent last year. We used school tool dashboards and then the wonderful Donna Marie Norton helped us get fifth grade because that's a little bit more difficult because they're coming from all different schools. That to create a list of students that was shared with staff. And we're looking for point people, for point people for those students. So actually, that's something that we started last year and went really well. So we're doing it again this year, but last year we had to start, um, five or ten weeks when we started to see data. This year we were able to start, you know, hit the ground running in September because we had the data from the summer. Number two is really interesting, and I want to tell you a little bit quickly about it. It was actually different as of just a few weeks ago, and that's because we had created a goal to look at our, our seventh grade students and really target that grade level because last year we saw that they had significantly lower attendance than our other grade levels. Well, as we started to look at the data from this year, it's not the same. Our seventh graders are, their attendance levels are pretty much the same as fifth and sixth. So our incredible attendance committee said, well, we want to go based on what we're seeing. So they have come up with individualized grade level engagement themes. Fifth grade is building relationships and building community. We have students coming from multiple different schools. And in their restorative practices classes, they're really focusing on who they are, um, within our Rocks Middle Community and then who they are within the larger, um, North Syracuse Community. In sixth grade, they're focusing on peer connections. And our wonderful family engagement specialist who, uh, came tonight said it best when she talked about how they really work on building peer connections, but also being able to identify when they need support with those peer connections. And that's something that they're working on this year. And then with our seventh graders, they're working on giving back. So they've built this great community and they have mentorship opportunities like Borough Bridges. This year, we're really going to look at them to be leaders in some of the community, um, ways that we give back to the community, such as our pantry wars and our cereal wars. Um, we have some plans for them to do some affirmations on lockers and bathroom mirrors and things like that. And then we're also going to try and increase participation in our attendance committee, so our point people are going to be invited to meetings. That's something that we didn't get to last year that we really want to do this year. So that we have more voices on that team, uh, because we're really excited about it. Okay. I'm also going to talk to you guys a little bit about our ELA data and then our ELA goal. So right here, you'll see our trend data for the ELA state tests. We highlighted our percent proficient, so student scoring a three or a four last spring. We went from thirty percent proficient to thirty-one percent. We have also highlighted our student scoring at the level one. We did see an increase in that from thirty-six percent to forty-one percent. The reason we've highlighted that is because it is a goal of ours to decrease that number. That actually started two summers ago when we met with our BPT and we noticed that our Ames web data, our students in the red weren't moving. And so last year, I know we talked to you all about really wanting to see a decrease in that. So if you look at the bottom part, you'll see our Ames web data, the first numbers in green and red are our fall data. The second numbers are our spring data, and so you can see the gains that we made, both in growing the green for each grade level and in decreasing the red. We did decrease the red in fifth and sixth, we did not in seventh, so that will continue, you know, to be a goal for us. Um, just to give you a reminder, our goal was to increase the green by ten percent, decrease the red by two. Right? So this year, we really want to continue to see that growth in the green and the decrease in the red for each grade level on our Ames web data. So the numbers you see up there in green and red, the first number are where our students scored this fall. The second number is where we hope to be in the spring. So you'll notice that for each grade level, you'll see a ten percent increase that we hope to see in the green and a two percent decrease in the red. Likewise, with state test data, we still want to, we want to decrease the level ones. We want to make sure we're, we're moving that, and I'll talk a little bit about a strategy we have for that. We also want to increase our percent proficient, I apologize, we want to increase our percent proficient to thirty-three percent. So what we talked about was, we saw a one percent increase last year. We want to make, obviously, we want to make bigger gains than that. But we talked about in our BPT really wanting to be realistic. So we, we doubled that and we want to go from thirty-one to thirty-three. I apologize that it says thirty-one up there. So how are we going to get there? Here's some of the strategies that we've talked about with our BPT. So we created a separate time for our students who receive AIS services to get their computer-based time. This came out of conversations with our AIS providers last year, who said to us, you know, the students need a certain amount of time on the computer, but when they're with us, we want to be instructing them. And so within our schedule, we were able to use their win time, which is what I need. It's a time that we have built into our schedule. So that every other day, those AIS students are able to go down and get that computer-based time. So that when they're with, um, teachers, they have more opportunities for the instructional piece. We also are really excited about the EL curriculum. And this is something that I know our teachers have been working really hard to implement. They're very, very excited about. We actually have a coach right within our building who's working on her administrative internship that's been very helpful. So that's something that we think is really going to be a factor, um, and a strategy for us. We also are working towards all of our content area teachers having access and the ability to review the Ames web data. This came out of conversations from last year because we had SMART goals for each of our, uh, CTTs where they were looking at how they could help improve our reading scores. And so they said, you know, it would help us to have access to the Ames web data so that we could see where students need that support. So that's something that we're working toward. And then we also have some expanded intervention opportunities. Um, there's roach-a-reading, power-up, and Wilson, the one that's not on there is really great reading. And that's one of the ways that we hope to see that decrease in red because we're working on those intervention strategies with our students.
Evening, and I'm going to talk to you about the math portion of our BPT goals here. So our data trends, as you can see, we are extremely proud of, uh, the percent proficient growth that we had, um, from twenty-four to forty-three percent. Um, we nearly doubled our percent proficient. And, you know, that's something that we've been working very hard on in the math CTTs as well as, you know, in the time provided with that developmental work with Nick Scholes throughout the year. That data-driven instruction was a huge piece to obtaining that goal and that time allotted to our teachers for that collaboration. Who help, you know, align our benchmarks and formative assessments throughout the learning to continue and grow students in that proficiency. Uh, we also highlighted the significant decrease we had in students scoring a level one. Um, we went to, from a forty-eight percent scoring level one down to a twenty-five. So we're making some significant strides, um, it's really statistically significant when we're looking at, you know, how we're able to nearly cut that in half in just one year. We're at numbers that we weren't seeing even before, uh, COVID. So if you look at our Ames web data, um, similar to what Joelle said, we were looking at the increasing proficiency while also decreasing the level ones. Um, we were able to show an increase across all three grade levels in Ames web data and a very large decrease across each grade level. But to continue that upward trend and that progress that we've made in Roxborough this year in the math. Um, our goals are to increase by ten percent across each grade level, that Ames web proficiency. Um, just like Ms. Furini said, um, the numbers on the left there are the current from this fall. And our hope is to grow that by ten percent in grades five, six, and seven. And then also, we're trying to decrease the level ones to continue that upward movement of those students that, you know, sometimes can be habitually stuck in that level one progress, the level one proficiency there. Um, so we're decreasing level ones to twenty-three percent is our goal for the New York State Math Test. While also increasing, increasing the percent proficiency forty-four. So continue that upward trend of the percent of students that are proficient, while also decreasing the level ones and moving them up, um, slightly. Um, we're going to obtain that by doing strategy, three different strategies here. Um, common, common formative assessments, including grade level benchmarks across team. Right, so really use that and hone in on some of those essential standards. Um, one thing that we were really proud of when doing our data dive, looking at the New York State, uh, math test data from last year is we had one hundred percent of students, um, get one question correct. Um, that's extremely, I mean, that's really showing that the teachers were focusing on that essential standard there. And that type of instruction and the data-driven instruction, you know, is directly contributed to how we're able to make that growth, and our hope is to continue that by, you know, really targeting those essential standards. Um, we're also going to continue to use the three-read strategy to help students decipher those long wordy, um, problems where some students are getting tripped up at. The three-read strategy is a wonderful thing where students are able to really break down the word problems into manageable parts. And it, they can be, you know, particularly tricky for students that are scoring in the levels one and test, right? But in order to, you know, make sense of that when it comes to the math testing, this three-read strategy really gets them to highlight the key numbers, what's being asked of them to do. And our third strategy is similar to what Ms. Furini said about using that win time productively. Um, we're not pulling students from their actual math class. We're not pulling them from different classes throughout the day for that computer-based, um, tiered interventions, right? They're going to be doing that during the, the win time to use things like I, Allen Waggles to help with that really targeted instruction to make up some of those gaps that they might have from previous years. Lastly here, I'm going to talk to you about the SEL goals here at Rocks Middle School. Um, as you can see, we're comparing spring twenty-twenty-two to spring twenty-twenty-three. Um, we were able to reduce the students that were scoring on the BIMAS two at high risk by four percent. And we were also able to increase the students that were scoring at the typical green level by, uh, four percent. So we're showing that upward trend in students, um, moving away from that high risk and towards the typical. Um, and we're really trying to get students in that green area there. So our goal for this year, when it comes to SEL, is targeted at the relationship skills, uh, competency measured in the BIMAS two. Our goal is to increase that to, increase that by two percent. And some strategies we have as a building, um, are really focused towards that goal. Um, one of them is BPT is investigating, developing a dialogue club where students can work on those personal peer-to-peer relationships. That we're seeing as a, a real need in our building, uh, not only just from the BIMAS two data, but from our day-to-day interactions with students. Um, another strategy we have to target this growth in relationship skills is really utilizing our restorative practices and promised own specialists in a healthy and productive way in our building. So these, uh, these adults in the building are going to be meeting with students in ISS and reflecting on, you know, why students are there, what can be done differently. Um, we're very fortunate to have these people in our building. And with Marina Patanzo just coming back, uh, for restorative work that's being done already in just a week. ISS is tremendous. Really responding well to it, and we're going to continue that throughout the year to help continue to grow these relationship skills. Um, utilizing the promised own specialist, um, find the attention, that's very similar to our strategy too, but now we're extending it to the after-school hours. Um, also, uh, closing the BPT communication loop to really clarify and focus our SEL within the building to the restorative practice and/or positivity project, whatever we move forward with, decide to move forward with as a building. But to keep that clear and focused so that we're all in the same alignment and moving in the same. And lastly, for our SEL strategy, um, we're going to continue to expand the building-wide restorative practices training. Um, initially targeted at, um, new staff members to the building that aren't trained in restorative practice coming in and from it, and it's, it's essential to us at the building level to make sure not only these new people are trained, but also refresher for training.
Um, so before we close, we wanted to share with you a few of the things that we're really excited about at Roxborough. Um, we have lots to celebrate and lots to be thankful for. Uh, first and foremost, we're super excited to share with you that per the New York State Education Department, we are officially once again a school in good standing. So yay for us. Um, to that end, we were really excited to see that we not only met, but in many cases exceeded several of our, um, building goals in both reading, math, and attendance. We were super excited about that. Um, but the other thing that is in some ways, um, more difficult to measure, but equally if not more important at Rocks Middle is just the sense of community that we have um, seen growing there and that we've established. And, um, I'm referring specifically to the family engagement piece that we have going on at our school. Um, we are super excited and super, um, optimistic about the changes we've seen in terms of students and families coming to school. So our locker night numbers were amazing and it was just such a positive and exciting event. Similarly, our Rox Trot and Honor Mayor breakfasts were extraordinarily well-attended to the point that we had um, overflow space in terms of standing room only. Um, our awards assemblies and our fifth grade orientation were equally well-attended. And I can just tell you that there is, um, just a spirit and an air of excitement around Rocks Middle right now, not only for the staff and students, but also for our families that are coming. Um, rising rock stars has been a big part of that, as well as the Rising Rock Stars has been a big part of that as well as the fact that we now have three emotional support animals in our building. One Ready is with us full-time, all day, every day. We're excited about that. Mango is our lemon Gecko, sorry about that. Our kids love him as well as Cooper who comes in periodically. He's a therapy dog as well. We were excited that last year we had our first musical again since two thousand and nineteen and it was amazing success. So we're just really excited about all of the things going on at Rox Middle and just the spirit and the sense that's happening there. So that is the end of our official presentation. We would happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Question and a comment. Question is, you have two special ed programs there. Do you have kids that just get related services only? Like they just get speech?
So we have the two special class programs, but we also have CTD programs, blended programs, related students who receive related services only. Yeah, sorry. So we only highlighted the two special class.
Okay, that answered, that answered my question because I was wondering like, what if a kid gets speech and then needs to move over, you know, to a CTD, where are they going to go? They got to switch schools. So I'm glad because.
We offer the full spectrum of services.
Nice. My other comment was, I love that you're focusing with the SEL program, that you're focusing on relationships. And if you, you know, do decide to stay with the positivity program, I absolutely love it. It unfortunately is not on like the state-approved programs of SEL programs and, but it should be. I just love it. But the focus of that is relationships based on Dr. Chris Peterson, who talked about a person's direct happiness is, you know, relate it directly to the positive relationships they have in their lives. So kudos to all of you and kudos to what you're doing. Thank you.
Back on what Beth said a little bit. First of all, huge gains in math. But I do, I love that you're focusing on relationships in like with the level engagement themes because, you know, a lot of some of the issues I think.
I have some too.
You know, it's your fault. Paul and I just got back. Elementary, I guess, I don't know if these are working very well. Roxborough Elementary in your school, it's amazing. I got a chance last year to go down and be a restorative circle and these were very, very difficult children. With, I shouldn't say difficult children, they had problems. And to have them open up to the counselor, unfortunately she's gone and she's gone ESM, but I'm sure you have a new person. Some questions though. I am, the math is amazing. I am concerned about the ELA. I want everybody to know on the board, level one is the lowest, but level one and two are both not proficient. That proficient means level three and four. So my question is, you have a new reading program this year. How is that going? And I feel that that may bring the CLA up. Can you tell me a little bit about the new reading program?
Oh, yes, we are in the first full implementation year of EL education. We did have many of our teachers pilot it last year. So some of them do have some experience with it. And I think that overall the experience has been very positive. There are certainly some growing pains and learning the new process and and getting all of our kids on board. You know, the other thing is that the, the program is designed to build on itself year over year. And so we are hopeful that as our kids coming in have had more experience with it, that we will start to be able to see some of that cumulative effect over time. We are super, as Joel mentioned, lucky in that we have actually a coach within our building, Melissa Potrat, who's been really able to help our teachers move this along, as well as our amazing LA department chair, Jen Agley. They're just, I can't say enough good things about it. They're on top of it and they're there to support our teachers through this process.
And it is very, very happy with, with coaches. That's one of his things. I had it because I would be running to the coach every day. So I know seventh grade department, how about fifth and sixth? All the teachers teach someone that's responsible at fifth and sixth grade for.
We have a mix of teams.
The other thing I want to add in your presentation curriculum. It is very important to me personally. Last year when you came and we were over the junior high, you know, last, all likes us to be here. We're concerned about students in that athletic, our athletic program and our music program. Increase of students participating in football, modified football, concert band or whatever.
Oh, with regards to our music program, we are super lucky and somewhat unique in that our fifth and sixth grade ensembles, not only our fifth and sixth grade, but fifth, sixth and seventh occurred during the school day. Whereas at many other schools, they happen outside of the school day. And because of that, we are seeing our music numbers increase pretty drastically. I can't speak specifically to our numbers in terms of participations in athletics, but I do not think that they've improved considerably.
My last thing is Connie Terros always invites us to honor breakfasts and things. Have an event like honor breakfast or something else. I was interested. Could you let Jill know? I'm retired and I love going to these things. These people all work, but I happen to have the day and I love going to the honor breakfasts and something else I saw. Could you send that to Jill and she'll send it to all the board?
Absolutely.
But listen, fantastic school, fantastic program. And I know you three are excellent administrators. I know she was teacher of the year. You've got amazing teachers. Keep up the great work. It's a great school.
I, I had a few. I don't just remember you brought up, I think. Talk to people, we found out recommending we were already doing, so I I had three questions, but now, well, I had two, but now I have I'm in Gecko, but it's named Ming. I'll make sure I heard that correctly. Okay. So ju-just two things then that you spoke about in the beginning, the fifteen-day challenge. Sounds like a deep dive into the something maybe that's solution tree packaged up. Am I reading that right? Is it, you went through the pieces of it and I actually is that, is that what it is? Kind of a deep dive into the PLC plot? How it works out? And then maybe there's buy-in that this is what we're
One or two, or at the most three standards or indicators. And to see if for fifteen days, the entire team can come to consensus on how it's to be taught, what's to be taught, how are we going to assess it, what we're going to do with kids who, you know, it's, it's difficult because I want to do is give up what I do, you know? But, but it's a commitment to do that for fifteen days and perks, according to Maria, I think it looks like it will work for us, but it's a small chunk, Paul. So instead of saying, can you get all of your kids to all of the standards for the whole year? Well, no. Yes. And, and then
Up to here about and this is, not sure, but I think is, is your science test now in fifth grade? I know I think, I think you referenced the Thank you. Any other? I see you're already up here, so.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Thanks Heather for showing us how close you had to sit. Thanks for having us this evening so that we can talk to you about some of the things that are going on at Gillette Road Middle School this year and some of the things that we're looking forward to for the remainder of the year. I'm Sarah Jones. I'm the building principal. And joining me tonight are Mr. Ackley and Ms. Frances Scotty, our associate principals, as well as Mr. Bacon, our chair for BPT. Before we get started, we'll just give you a brief overview of what Gillette Road Middle School looks like this year. We have a total of one thousand twenty-five students in our building. Our seventh grade being our largest class and each class a little bit smaller than the one ahead of it. We have twenty-nine fewer students this year than last year. In our special education program, we do have a full continuum of services. So that does include students who just have related services as well as CTD and resource-only students. Then we have students in our blended program. We have a total of twenty-six sections of CTD this year in both our CTD program and our blended program combined. We have two special class programs in our building as well. We house the fifteen-to-one program for the district. The fifteen-to-one program serves students with more significant cognitive impairments. Typically, the students in the fifteen-to-one program do push out for some of their academics. Most typically that includes special areas, science and social studies. And then they receive part of their day in a special class setting with a special education teacher as the teacher of record for typically math and ELA. We also have thirty students in our ENL program this year. And we were really happy to be able to increase our ENL staffing by point five this year. So we appreciate that from the Board of Ed. It made it very challenging to meet the needs of our Ls with only one and a half teachers, which is what we had last year. Due to the fact that we're really running two programs within our building, an elementary program and a secondary program. So scheduling to meet our students' needs was, was quite challenging with a traveling ENL teacher. Next, we have our mission statement here. This is something that our BPT is planning to look at to revise this year. To have it be a little bit more in line with our current district mission and vision. But what stands out most in our mission statement that we're really focused on this year is the word collaboratively. You'll find that we're really focused on building a team with our students and our staff this year. Speaking of, I'm going to ask Mr. Ackley to talk about our collaboration goal.
Good evening. So this summer, the BPT met and the goal number one that we talked about follows along with the strategic plan of the district, focusing around becoming a professional learning community. So we look forward to have our collaborative teams complete the PLC work continuum and set a smart goal for each CTM around one indicator for the year. The collaborative teams will monitor their progress toward meeting their goal and they will be sharing their, their results at the end of the school year. Some of the strategies we're using for this is that all the core area teams meet with their CTMs different times. Some meet before the school day, some meet during the school day. All use the same universal agenda so that we can follow it. As administrators, we have access to all of them and that we know what they're going to be doing in those meetings, what they're talking about throughout the school year. We are in our second year of getting the support from Solution Tree with Barb Phillips, working with our guiding coalition with this, which is a tremendous help. As administrators, we participate in the CTMs. We may not make every one of them, but we try to get to pretty much everyone that we can, depending on what's going on in the building at the time. And we look towards our guiding coalition to help us with this, support us with this work with the collaborative teams. And talking about the, the continuum work and setting the smart goals, we used our first building day PD to work on the smart goals within the CTMs. And what you see on the screen here is just some of the stuff that came out of last Tuesday's CTM meetings that we had on our half day. And with the, with the departments and what the teachers were looking at doing for the school year. Special education department, they're all kind of similar is that they're all looking at benchmarks and having similar benchmarks and assessments. So they can talk about where their students are throughout the, if it's the fifth and sixth grade, four teachers, five teachers per team or the seventh grade, which we have three teams of seventh grade teachers. So they're all doing the same benchmarks and assessments to know where each students are. Social studies as well, they were looking at moving from implementing to developing stage to monitor the students learning. And they're looking at doing this between using four common assessments that they create amongst the department. And then being able to come back and talk about that with each other and where the students are progressing, where they're struggling and go back and reassess. Fifth grade collaborative math, again, you can see where they're going from implementing to developing. And again, using the common assessments that they're developing within the departments as well as the sixth grade ELA. So they're all kind of on the same, same path, looking at a big thing that we're looking at now with our new EL curriculum is getting everybody on the same, the same page. And so that students are getting the same test and we can look at the data and see where we, we need to improve and where we're looking at what standards we're doing well in. Our second goal that we looked at is supporting around our high school graduation rate. Last year, we set a goal of, we wanted to get down to ten percent from, I believe we're at eighteen. We didn't quite make that goal. We got down to sixteen percent last year. So we decided we're going to bring this goal back with a goal of, of achieving the ten percent this year. You can see as it, in twenty, twenty, twenty-one, we're about thirty-five and we're starting to come back down. So our goal this year is to be under ten percent. Currently, as we're forty-two days into the school year, I ran the numbers this morning and we're sitting at seven point six percent. So we're there. I'm not going to celebrate it yet. Still got a lot of the school year to go, but the numbers are trending better than they were last year at this point. I think last year at this point, we were still up about twenty-two or twenty-three percent when we presented last year. So some of the ways that we're getting around this, parent engagement and the education about the attendance. We use parent square letters. We're using the district, we'll say the national grid letter that the district sends out that the parents like it because they get to see. They know how they, they're comparing. And then we use the tiered approach. Our, the first line of defense is our teachers. When a teacher doesn't see a kid in the class for a couple of days, they're going to reach out to the parents and say, I miss Johnny. Is he feeling okay? When are we going to see him back? As that progresses, if the student's not in school, then it'll move to the counselors and then to the principals for us reaching out. And if need be, we will go to the access people that come to our building and the state, if need be, we, we hope we don't get there with this. Tier two interventions, we're, we're having staff mentors. So if we know a student has bad attendance in the past, we're going to assign them a staff mentor to kind of get them to come to school and, and kind of friend with them to make them want to come to school. And again, exploring initiatives and recognition programs with good attendance. We are doing a positivity project as part of our SEL. Students are getting their, their spot, student spotlight at Gillette. So this helps with, they know they're going to get something if they get a spotlight, they're in school, they get a ice cream Sunday halfway through the year and then one at the end of the year. So it's, it's little things that we're hoping will keep the students in the school.
Good evening. Um, I'm going to be talking to you about our reading proficiency at Gillette Road. Um, in our first chart, you can see the end of year reading proficiency based on our Ames Web Universal Screener. Um, in 2122, our fifth grade, um, 67% were reading proficient. Um, sixth grade was 66% and seventh grade was 72%. We saw all of those increase into 2223, fifth grade moved up to 71%. Sixth grade, 69% and seventh grade went to 74%. Um, we want to continue with that trend of growth. So you can see in our second chart, we've got our fall 2023 data for our Ames Web. So this is where our students are starting at in fifth, sixth and seventh grades. Um, we've set a goal for eight percent or better improvement in reading proficiency based on that 60th percentile. Um, that would bring us to 61% proficient, 75% proficient and 82% proficient. Our next slide, we have our ELA, um, assessment data with New York State. As you know, uh, three or four is proficient in reading. Um, and with fifth grade from 2122, we were at 33% scoring in the proficient. For fifth grade, sixth grade was 64% and seventh grade was 38% with a building average of 45% scoring in that three to four range. Um, the following year, we showed, um, a improvement in fifth grade from 33 to 43%. In sixth grade, there was a dip to 44% and in seventh grade, an increase to 50%. Uh, for a building average again of 45%. So our goal this year is to have a building average of 50% in our reading proficiency. And across all grade levels. Um, so for our BPT goal number three, which is supporting the district goal around reading proficiency. Over the course of the school year, we're hoping to increase the number of students in the green at each grade level by eight percent or better. And also decrease the students in red by two percent or more throughout each grade level, um, on those benchmarks. Um, we are also hoping to achieve a building average of 50% proficient on the New York State ELA test. Ways, um, strategies that we're hoping to achieve this is primarily when our first and foremost is the new tier one ELA curriculum. So EL education is something that all of our teachers have been embracing and working through. Um, and there's been quite a bit of training around that. At many levels, when we walk into these classrooms, we're seeing students really engaged with the literature and the discussion. And, um, there's a level of excitement around it. Um, and moving from, uh, that tier one curriculum, we're also giving our teachers collaborative team time as we've talked about already. During those times, the ELA teachers now have these common formative assessments with this program. So they're able to review how all students are performing and then discuss as a team, how they can make improvements or changes. Or what strategies worked in one classroom that panned out better than another classroom. Um, we also have our AIS teachers working with three intervention programs. These are, um, research-backed programs. It allows for more flexible grouping. So we can actually target more specific needs and break kids up in those AIS groups based on their individual needs, if it's phonics or comprehension related. And then in our special ed program, we also have inter, three intervention programs that work for the same reason to tailor the instruction to specific student needs. Uh, we've also made some changes to our study hall model so that students are able to move about their study hall to receive additional support from teachers in areas of need. Um, most impressively, our seventh grade teachers have, um, committed to doing a lunch lab. So students are able to sign up and come in during their lunch period and have a working lunch with teachers in areas that they need additional support. And then we're also looking to engage, um, all of the other content areas with the ELA standards. So with the new curriculum, all of the teachers are able to see what themes are being worked on. Um, and what skills are being worked on. And so they can also try to make some connections and tieovers from ELA into their subject area.
Very similar to the ELA, uh, the math proficiency also is moving in an upward trend. Uh, from 2021, 2022 to 2022, 2023, we're just looking for upward movement, uh, with it. Our goals in fifth grade would be 70% uh, for proficiency, uh, 67% in sixth and 80% in seventh. We know that in the New York State math assessment, we've done actually very well the past couple of years and we're moving once again in an upward trend. We were able last year to hit 60%. Uh, so we set a little bit more loftier goal of 65%. Uh, just once again, trying to move in that upward direction for our math abilities. So what do we want to do? Well, we want to make sure that we continue, just like the ELA, to increase the percentage of green by eight percent. Or more, same thing, upward trend and decrease the red by two percent. Uh, all that again is based on the Ames Web Math Benchmarks. We also want to achieve that building average of 50% on the New York State Math State Test, which is kind of where we are right now. For us, it's, as we'd said with ELA, starting with common assessments, taking the data from that, finding the necessary interventions. But we want to add an additional component that's up there and that's the enrichment and extension. We've decided to add a couple of programs for students, uh, now after school and other opportunities, one of which is MathCon. And it's an online math activity, uh, for students to do. It's a national program. That allows our students that are already proficient in math to continue to be proficient and possibly move up to maybe that next level from a three to a four. The Math League is an opportunity for them to be challenged in math. Uh, we find that we spend quite a bit of our time talking about interventions for students that need that tier two or tier three support. And don't really spend a lot of time talking about the students that are already at the levels that they need to be and kind of pushing them. We know the discussions with Micron coming, we want to make sure that our math and our science are very strong. Uh, to allow, uh, that opportunity for students to do with that. And just as we said, also study how we're doing, we're doing the lunch lab, we're doing content areas. Uh, and our other big thing that our staff will be participating in tomorrow is the University of Rochester, uh, professional development.
Our final BPT goal this year is to support our district goal around social and emotional competencies. Um, so as a building, we looked at our BIMAS data. BIMAS is our universal screener that fifth and sixth grade teachers, um, complete based on their perception of student behavior. Um, and so the most critical areas for us at Gillette Road Middle School that came out on our screening data from last spring. Um, was around the competencies of social awareness and relationship skills. So we decided as a BPT to really focus on those two areas, um, with our work around SEL. And we decided to implement three new strategies this year. Um, not new to us this year, but last year we implemented the tier one behavior expectation matrix. Um, so our expectations for students at Gillette Road Middle School are to be safe, be respectful and be responsible. And we spend time teaching students what that means in different settings. And when we are conferencing with students about decisions that they've made, we really go back to those, um, that framework to help them shape their behavior. We have an active SEL committee and we're looking for them to have an increased role this year. Mr. Ackley oversees that committee. Um, so during that committee, we're talking about really teaching our relationship and social awareness skills. Um, talking about different ways to recognize students for positive behavior in addition to the ways that we already do. Um, and one of our new strategies that we implemented, um, to support this goal was SEL focused, um, half days for students. Um, so we've really taken our half days, which tend to be a little bit of a loss of instructional time based on the way that the middle school schedule runs. And really focused on building those relationship skills and social awareness skills. So we'll talk about that a little bit on our celebration slide. Um, we also have an opportunity for more curriculum connections this year, again with our EL education, um, curriculum. There's a whole component which is habits of character. Those habits of character are displayed in the students' ELA classroom and they're really talked about throughout the curriculum. Um, so that really just helps them to hear it and frame it in a different lens while they're, um, studying ELA. We added a new strategy to our community circles and connection protocols. Um, you know, restorative circles is something that we've been trying to get off the ground, um, at Gillette over the past couple of years. Um, but like anything, it's really a challenge to compete for that time. Um, you know, teachers have a lot to cover with their students and our students are increasingly needier, um, as the years go on. So devoting time to those circles sometimes, um, you know, is, there's a little bit of resistance to that. So in order to combat that, we implemented a new process this year called Monday Meeting. And we've asked our fifth and sixth grade teachers to do this during study hall and seventh grade teams to determine who's responsible for Monday meeting on their team. Um, and we made the community connection circles ahead of time. So they go out to staff, um, they're already prepared for the whole year. Um, the, the topics are really focused on building those connections and it just kind of takes, um, the prep work off of the teachers. And put it back on us to create it for them. Um, so that's going fairly well. Um, and we also implemented a different format for our social skills groups this year. Um, as you're probably aware, our schedule at Gillette Road Middle School is a bit of a challenge. So one of the ways that we addressed our scheduling concerns, um, was to make common study hall times for fifth and sixth grade. So, um, our fifth graders all have study hall in one of two periods, first or ninth. And our sixth grade is split into three study hall periods. So that does allow for an opportunity for students to work in smaller groups with teachers on academics. But it also allows for our counselors to pull groups of students, uh, more efficiently at the grade level. And to implement some social skills groups during that time. We have quite a bit to celebrate this year. Um, we were really excited to kick off our year with a back to school block party, which was very well attended. Um, as I mentioned with our SEL goal, we are doing some community connection days focused on SEL during our half days. Um, there's some pictures from the October 6th half day, um, where, you know, we planned for lessons for teachers to implement, um, with their students. And that included, um, a community circle period. It included a period on teamwork through the positivity project. It included a hands-on learning activity different for each grade level. So our fifth graders built spaghetti and marshmallow towers. Our sixth graders did some cup stacking without touching. And our seventh graders did some, um, I don't know, lifting of objects with those long strings and yarn. Um, it was a lot of work to prepare, but they had a lot of fun. And, um, our fourth period lesson was a community art project and it is almost done. It's creating a mural with a piece of art that each student, they're holding them by that chalkboard created. Um, so that's pretty cool. We have some pictures of our student spotlight award recipients. Um, our award recipients demonstrated the character strengths of open-mindedness, um, teamwork. And integrity. Um, so those were our winners. And we also, um, on October 31st, rather than planning a full day of SEL because it was so close to the October 6th date. Um, we did a smaller, um, activity where teachers were provided with a lesson on, um, kindness and random acts of kindness. And all of our students, um, made a pledge to carry out an act of kindness during the week. So that was just a display of that. This is our BPT member list. Um, we have a pretty diverse group with some good representation. And we welcome your questions.
Questions or comments?
I promised I wouldn't ask them. There's a difference.
Sure.
Uh, number one, thank you for giving us a list of your BBT members. I always like to see, uh, who's on the team and these people ha, I want the board to know, work extra. This is all on their time and, um, it's much appreciated by the, the ministers. Who, uh, can I ask one question? Who is the district representative on your committee? Do you have one?
I am on DSC.
Okay. Um, amazing school. I am there on Saturday mornings. Um, for the, uh, Optimist Girls Basketball, grades three through, um, si- six. And I want to thank the custodian. If you get to see her, she's amazing, uh, with parents and with students. And then I see a lot of your celebrations that you have, um, down by the gym. Again, I would say please invite the board to something special. Um, you know, we can't make a lot of the events, but if there's something, please let Jill know and she, like she does for Connie Terose and send it out to us. And I apologize, I need to get to Gillette. I go to a lot of schools, but Gillette, I somehow don't make it, so sorry.
I'll make a comment. Oh, sorry.
He turns it up.
Eat it all day.
Turn it on. Okay, um. Is the fire alarm again?
You got speakers right behind you.
Is that? It's not the.
Relationship skills. Thank you.
Make a comment.
Mr. Bacon, I forgot. Mr. Bacon, um, you know, Mr. Bull sent us something last week. Mr. Bacon was honored, um, at a dinner for all that he's done for Central New York with technology. And thank you, Mr. Bacon, for that.
Thank you. Hey, we'll move in, we can move into the public content. Board of Education meetings are meetings that are welcoming to the public and they may attend and observe. However, North Syracuse, we welcome your comments on matters related to the district. A period of time not to exceed 30 minutes in total is set aside at regular meetings of the board for the purpose of hearing comments from interested individuals. Board of Education members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. Issues involving a particular student or employee or staff are not permissible topics during the public meeting. Employer student concerns should be addressed to superintendent of schools during regular business hours. Speakers can be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks and there'll be no more than 10 individuals speakers allowed during this portion of the meeting. All remarks must be addressed to the officer presiding over the board. Most questions related to the schools can be answered by a responsible school official. By calling during business hours or written questions may also be addressed to school staff, department directors, central administration. Or the Board of Education by contacting our district clerk. With all that, we have six this evening. So we'll begin with Jessica Soulier when you are prepared. Green one, yeah.
In an email dated 11/3, it states, although one reflect the district policy guidelines for selection of library and media materials. The district has agreed that assassination classroom, quote, is not appropriately placed and will be removed, end quote. This leaves to question, while I agree that they are and should be, what makes these books bannable and other books not? Since the district likes to cite policy, I would like to do the same. Eight, 4810, teaching about sensitive and controversial issues, including religion. Sensitive or controversial issues are defined as those problem subjects or questions about which there are significant differences of opinion for which there is no easy resolution and discussion. Which may create strong feelings among students, parents, staff and community. Under competent guidance and instruction, to study issues appropriate to their interest, it goes on. 5311.5, reporting of sex crimes to local law enforcement agencies. All school officials, including school teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, psychologists, social workers, administrators, board members and other school personnel are mandated to report. Incidents of suspected child sexual abuse or any other inappropriate sexual conduct. It also states in here the Safe Act of 2002. And it also cites Article 263 of the Penal Law, which is. 263.15, promoting a sexual performance by a child, a person is guilty of promoting a sexual performance by a child when knowing. The character and content thereof, they produce, direct or promote any performance which includes sexual. the character and content thereof, they produce, direct or promote any performance which includes sexual conduct by a child less than 17 years of age. I could go on. This tells me that per your policy, you have a bunch of mandated reporters that are not reporting on the very listed items in your policies. It states here that you are not promoting. How can you state that you are not promoting any performance which includes a child less than 17 years old? When you are hosting, supplying, lending and encouraging minor children to view the very thing, it's legal punishable by the law. These are class D felonies. If your school librarian were here in this room, I would tell them you should be ashamed of yourself and if you supply my child with any of these materials, I will have you arrested. Point blank. Also, on a side note, but equally is important, I'd like to quote, "A lawsuit alleges that the companies have played a significant role in causing mental health crisis among children and teenagers, making it increasingly challenging for them to succeed in school," end quote. Another quote, "Our commitment to the welfare and education of our students is unwavering. It is our moral duty to protect the mental health and well-being of the children in our community. Joining the nationwide lawsuit is a critical step towards holding these local social media companies accountable for their exploitative conduct," end quote. Last quote, "The North Syracuse District remains committed to the well-being of its students, ensuring their educational experience is not compromised by the negative effects of harmful contact," end quote. How dare you try to profit from doing the very same thing that you are supplying? I don't believe my three minutes is up, but I will say I might be just a mom, which means I will protect my child and other children. I will step in when you're wronged and I'm not done.
It's three minutes. It's not a special timer for different people, so sorry about that. Thank you. Hey, David Monahan is next. Paul. One. Starboard running light, that's the port running light over there. Retired Navy guy. What was I, what is my time? Oh, sorry, I already started talking. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I just want to talk about some facts. The budget in 2022, 2023 school budget was 188 million, 367,855 dollars. The budget in 2023, 2024 was approved, 203 million, 270,342 dollars. That's an increase of almost 15 million. It's like $98,000 short of 15 million. And I think that's not solely because COVID money ended in on September 23rd of this year, but had a huge part about it. Percent increase from last year to this year was 7.9%. Typically, it's not that high. The, it, it approved by 59%, which is a historical low. I think normally it's like 70 to 75% approval. I can't wait to see what it is on May 14th of next year. The, and also as far as the election is concerned, on May 16th this year, less than 5% of the population that can vote actually turned out. That's a historical, that's typically historical, which is unfortunate. And right now, as I know that the teacher's contract is up next year, so I'm sure that the contract negotiations are going on with the N S C A and a few other people. The American Rescue Plan money ends next year, September 23rd of next year. The 2024, 2025 school budget is going to increase again. That's a fact. District residents were told, I was told specifically by one of the board members that your taxes might go up $67 a year. Well, my dad, who's three days shy of being 98 years old, a World War II veteran, his school tax went up 25%. And there's a member of this audience tonight, their school tax went up over 88%. Next school board election is May 14th, 2024, 190 days. It can't get here soon enough. We'll, we'll vote for three, hopefully new board members and also for the annual budget. And also, as I am a supporter of increased teachers pay, it's especially because of inflation. I do not support certain books in school that I consider to be porn books. I am not a book burner. And I am not anti-trans. But I am against trans girls that are going into biological boys rooms and vice versa. And as I said before this board, is I have a gay son who I love and respect. So don't say I'm an anti-gay foe, you know, I'm not a, is I don't have phobia against gays or trans. Is I support all students. One thing that I'd like to request of this board in the very near future, by maybe January of next year, that there's a Board of Education Town Hall. Cause you just sit there, you can't talk back to me and I can't ask you a direct question because you won't answer me. I would love to have a town hall with, with you all. I think that we could probably come to a point where we have a lot of common ground. But right now I feel like I'm not an ally of yours as I'm against what you're doing. Thank you. Thank you. And next, Heather Calabria.
I've come here for months and every time I stare at the name on the building, Dr. Jerome Melvin, and I am perplexed at the lack of understanding from any one of you what that means. Dr. Jerome Melvin actually was a great man of the utmost integrity and leadership skills that are lacking today in our schools. I grew up with Dr. Melvin in Liverpool and he was tough and everyone thought it was held accountable with actual morals and values. I can attest to that as we did not close schools unless it was minus 25 degrees. And I even walked to school back then all bundled up. We have lessened our rules since then and have no sense of leadership as we now do not appreciate toughness and integrity. Dr. Melvin stood for truth and values. None of you today match up to that as you deny, deny truth every day and teach propaganda. You stand here and say the pledge of allegiance, but none of you have any meaning to it. You are, you say republic, one nation under God, but you have taken God out of everything. I'm still completely perplexed at the idea that we are wasting taxpayer money on a frivolous lawsuit blaming media companies for children's mental health. The state of children's mental health has absolutely nothing to do with social media, but it has everything to do with your lack of leadership and denial of truth. You cannot consistently lie and promote an agenda with children and expect them to be healthy. First of all, you sent these kids home three years ago and have them, gave them all computers. Every child now has a laptop, but you're complaining about media. I would much rather you give you, give them all 10 pound books than a laptop for handouts. Books have better explanations and more information and are much healthier for children than staring at a computer screen all day. My son didn't even have a phone until ninth grade, but only had to have one because they were being used in the classroom. While you sent them home, you completely revamped everything to be about CRT and gender ideology. Kids do not want your propaganda and lies. They need to be educated, not indoctrinated. You want truth? The first hundred slaves were white and the majority of slaves in the country were white until the mid 1800s. But you are on the side of B L M and socialist propaganda promoting the idea that it is white supremacy and dividing everyone. You hire teachers with agenda and have political posters in their classroom. No teacher should be promoting an agenda. You have the New York State Regents English exam promoting climate change. Do you even know the biggest greenhouse gas is water vapor? I don't see anyone blaming water vapor for anything. Without CO2, you have no plants and thereby no animals. Did you know that anytime there was an ice age, it was due to low levels of CO2? You also have teachers promoting vaccines in the classroom, yet there's never been any disease that has been eradicated because of a vaccine. You have a God-given immune system that works efficiently when supported. Mental health actually works well and it stems from your gut and your microbiome. You cannot eradicate your microbiome with mass vaccines, 5G glyphosate and other toxins and expect to be healthy. The schools are the biggest promoters of drugs. And as soon as a child is hyper, you want to put them on drugs. Drugs eliminate the microbiome and eliminate vital nutrients and minerals. Rarely is any child in need of drugs and boys are not hyper. Boys are kinetic and learn through movement, not by sitting still all day. 90% of your school lunches also have glyphosate in them, which eliminates your microbiome as well.
Thank you. Next we have John Carrillo.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple, couple of quick updates. Um, Friday, October 20th, we had our book ban go. Uh, we distributed well over 1,200, uh, books to roughly, uh, 76 families. It was so well attended that our next event, which will be on, uh, December 8th, is now N S E E P. And it is our holiday event. So Mr. Crabtree, to your point, that's your invite. Our upcoming food drive and holiday distribution, um, between the N S T A A and the N S C A. Uh, we have an annual food drive that will begin on, uh, November 13th and run through, uh, December 11th. Distribution will begin on December 13th and, uh, through, run through the 15th. Last year, we distributed well over 180 baskets. Um, so we put that out there and if there is a school board, all of our non-perishable items, drop them off the office. We'd be very happy to spread them out to our community. And the last piece I want to bring is about a program at the junior high, uh, called Lead Worthy. And a couple of years ago, we put it in as an elective, uh, worked very hard to get this together. Um, and for me, it was a very personal resonance. I took a phone call from a student, um, that I've known for several years. Um, and ultimately the message was this. Thank you. It was a message of gratitude. Um, and as we're dialoguing about that and we're really measuring what gratitude means, how it impacts your life and how when we reflect true gratitude, how we can extend that to a multitude of people. Um, and this Lead Worthy class is part of their project. Um, and I will tell you, um, not only do you have to learn to express gratitude, but you have to also learn to take gratitude when it's delivered. So on that, that's my three updates. Thank you for the time.
Doug Stanle.
Good evening, my name is Douglas Stanle. I'm a resident taxpayer within our Syracuse school district. I'm here this evening to support the district's libraries. Libraries are repositories of information, but more, so much more than that. There's supposed to be a safe harbor, a, a place to escape unpleasant, uh, encounters, a place to build community with like-minded people and a place to discover important truths about yourself and the wider world. The librarians within these libraries are so much more than people who check out books and restock your shelves. There are teachers with advanced education and professional license. They have the ability to connect with every student in your school and provide a vital role to helping students see the possibility that exists beyond the confines of a public education. When you start reading materials that reflect the diverse identities and experiences of our youth, you show them that there's place for them, that they matter and that their contributor, contributions have value. Books that speak to the broad range of critical thinking, gender, sexuality, cognitive and physical differences show our kids that they're, they're meant to be here and that they have the potential to do wonderful things with inside this world. It is very evident that there are some people here who will criticize books and resources within your care, challenge you on your choices and demand that you remove books that they find offensive. I urge this board to do what the constitution of this country demands, what the constitutional case law has upheld. It's 2023 and after reference a 54-year-old Supreme Court decision, Stanley v. Georgia, authored by Justice Marshall, uh, where he states, if the First Amendment means anything, it means the state has no business telling man what books he may read or what films he may watch. Our whole constitutional heritage rebels at the thought of giving government the power to control men's minds. A 1982 decision, Board of Education v. Pico, addressed constitutional challenge of a local school board's decision to remove several books from the school district's libraries. Justice Brennan wrote the principal opinion stating, local school boards have the discretion and management of school affairs. However, that must be exercised in a manner that comports with transcending imperatives of the First Amendment, the principle that constant, that the constitution protects the right to receive information and these ideas. I implore this board to direct the person or persons responsible for removing books from your library to put them back in circulation. It is not the board of education's duty to parent its students. If a parent doesn't wish for a child to read certain books, I 100% stand with them in making that decision, even if I don't agree. In the same breath, it's nobody's right to take, uh, take away another parent's decision on what their child may or may not read. If this district wants to stand on a very slippery slope banning and removing certain books, the seventh best selling Japanese science fiction series, I'd be more than happy to provide a list of violent sexually explicit religious fictional mythology that should be removed. Fair is fair after all. In conclusion, do better, keep the books on the shelves and support your librarians. Thanks.
Thank you. And we have Fred Perez.
Okay, this will be quick. My name is Fred Perez, Jr. And my wife, Phyllis, we live on 43 Tree Line Drive in North Syracuse. For over 36 years, we've lived there. I am a Vietnam veteran. I am 79 years old. My wife of 59 years is 77. Our school taxes went up almost 90%. Our income is social security. We are on senior enhanced. Seniors are struggling. This is not right. How could you do this? It is wrong. This because our school budget went up $15 million, 3.2 increase on my bill? Don't get me wrong, I'm for helping the children in this community and I'll pay my fair share. But when you raise my taxes that much, I can't afford this. Why did you do it? Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have Board of Education Committee reports. I'll start with, um, Mr. Thorn on policy.
Thank you, Paul. Our next policy committee meeting will be a week from tomorrow on November 14th.
Hey, thank you, November 14th, that's, they're in person. They have been, right? Okay. And Mr. Crabtree, you wanted to, I know we have one coming up.
Yeah, we have a legislative, um, committee at five o'clock on Wednesday and we're going to be talking. Lisa Goldberg's coming to do a presentation and also, um, Okawala is going to talk about, um, the positivity club. And we're going to get out early because you know why, right? Ask you a game, okay?
Oh, wow. Okay.
There are priorities.
Basketball, I hope.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent comments?
Okay, I have quite a bit, so just want to start off by this past Sunday night at almost 10:00 PM, our marching band again took number one in New York State. Absolutely outstanding. Their their performance was flawless and you have over a hundred students performing into the wee hours of the night. And, um, it was well past my bedtime, but I was there watching them and it was amazing. So again, kudos to all of them and, uh, to Mrs. Siemens and her, and her, uh, crew. Um, also football had a big win and they will be playing against CBA for the sectional finals, uh, this coming Sunday. So, uh, that will be an exciting game to watch as well. Boys volleyball on Saturday had a great win against FM. So they really showed up and they, uh, FM was the, was the lead, uh, section. I'd say number one in the section at the time. So we, we took them down. Unfortunately, our girls soccer, I was there, uh, lost to Shenandoah from Albany, but they had a phenomenal season and many of their, their students are, uh, not, uh, upper grades. They are a very young team, so, uh, there'll be more to follow. Mr. Crabtree will be here. There's be voting here at the district office tomorrow. And the, the one that I have a long list that I've, uh, haven't talked about, but give me a moment, swimming. Leah Benedict, the 200 I am champion, placed third in the 100 butterfly. Kate, and correct me, it looks like Guchardi, uh, Molly Guchardi, Leah Benedict, Rose Coleman, third in section three finals. Kate Guchardi, Abigail Poseidon, Anne Myers, Ella Lawrence, placed sixth, 400 free relay. Kate Guchardi, Casti Perrot, placed third and fifth in the 100 backstroke. Then there's diving. Sophia Segru and Isabella Moya, placed third and seventh, class A diving champions. Sophia Segru and Isabella, placed fourth and eighth in state diving qualifiers. Um, I will say that the quality of programs in the district are absolutely amazing. and our students and families continue to show up day in and day out. And it's not just, they get home at five o'clock, six o'clock. Our students are competing and working on their craft well into the late evening, and then sometimes doing homework. So again, not only to the students, but to the staff and to the parents that repeatedly are supporting our students. Thank you.
Do you have any Board of Education comments?
I just want the board and the community to be aware that the Board of Regents will be making a presentation this month in changes in graduation. So be aware, there are going to be changes for students graduating in New York State, different pathways. So I'm anxious, they kept it under a lid, but it, it's going to be coming. You know, Dan, you're so supportive. We're so glad you are superintendent, and, and the kids are just great in our school district. I am excited because we're going to start girls wrestling. I am so excited. I know some girls that are so excited about this at the high school. I do believe we're also going to have flag football in the spring. Am I correct on that? Yeah, so we're giving ladies an opportunity to do some sports. Paul and I did attend the New York School Boards Association Conference in Buffalo, my first. I believe we learned a lot of things. I'm going to share my information at our retreat. But I'm excited that Sandy Ruffo, who was our Region Four Director, has been selected as the new president of the New York School Boards Association. I believe she came here when I was not on the board. I know she came to Bosie's. She's a wonderful lady, and she will bring this district and all districts farther ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other comment? Okay, seeing none, and I, I know our student member could not be with us this evening, but here are those comments. We're going to move. Action items, I'm going to ask for a motion for the consideration or approval of the minutes of the meeting of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Like to group items B, C, and D together. If I get a motion to that effect, motion from Mr. Drew, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. B, C, and D are the consideration and classification of the placement of disabled students in preschool and school programs and in home instruction by the various committees. So we have B, C, and D before us. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And E, please, a motion to acknowledge your business office reports from June, July, and August of twenty-three. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Discussion action items, we have acknowledgement of gifts and NSC grants. If I get a motion to acknowledge those, Mr. Marizio, motion, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, that is carried, and we also have acknowledgement of the gifts for, we have some musical instruments listed on your agenda. If I get a motion to put those before us, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any questions or comments or discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, thank you, that is carried. Like a motion, please, if I could get one, to put C and D together. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. These are the resolutions to create one-point-oh special ed teacher at Gillette Road and a one-point-oh TA or teaching assistant at Allen Road Elementary. So we have C and D before us. Any questions or comments? Question, okay, all in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And E, a motion, please, to accept the declaration of marketable and non-marketable goods. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Thank you. And we have instructional personnel report A, a motion, please, if I say it before us for acceptance. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion there? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried, and a motion to accept sport, staff, personnel report B. Motion from Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that is carried. I'll make a motion for executive session, and I'll ask for a second, and this is to move into executive session with the purpose of reviewing one negotiation item regarding substitute hiring rates and five legal issues with no action to follow. If I get a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion or additional items? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, and that's carried. We are in executive session. A motion to adjourn, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any questions, concerns over that? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, we are adjourned. Seven thirty-two.